Okay. Welcome. Thank you for being here. We are here for a closed session on potential litigation, so I will take public comment and then we will adjourn to closed session. Are there any members of the public? There are two members of the public currently. David Cardinal has his hand up. David, go ahead.
Thank you. Dave Cardinal, Golden Oak Drive, I have a question and a comment. The question is whether if through the chair Rusty loses his threatens lawsuit and needs to pay attorney's fees, he can simply fold as one person Delaware Shell Corporation and not have any personal liability. Related to that, my comment is that if that's true, which I think it is, I think it's morally bankrupt to use that vehicle to hold our town hostage. If he really believes in the strength of his case rather than just the value of threatening the town with bankruptcy to get a personal audience and negotiate, he could have brought his complaint in his own name with his own checkbook on the line like we, the people of the town have because we're paying attorney's fees including for this meeting and taking personal responsibility. The way things are situated currently, it seems like pure extortion to get his way in private negotiations over the will, over and above the will of us, the majority of our town, and you are duly elected to government. For one, I hope we don't negotiate out of weakness and would be happy to donate to a town legal defense fund if needed to make sure we don't have to cave to bullies. Thank you.
Thank you, David. There's one other attendee who wishes to speak. There are no members of the public here in the schoolhouse. No other hands are raised, so we will close all communications and close this meeting. We will adjourn at seven. Okay, we're live. Hey. Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the town council. I will I'll report on the closed session, but after a public comment. So that we are, we are on item five of the, of the agenda, which is oral communications. So if there are any, anyone wishes to address the council on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, they may do so now. Oh, one quick note before we go to that, which is that Vice Mayor Wernikoff is out of town and is, was not able to post the meeting properly, but is joining as a member of the public. So she will be observing, but she will, and she will comment, I believe briefly, but she will not actually be a voting number or a participant as a member. Let her find that. Or communications. Do we have hands raised?
We have two hands.
Okay, um, do you want to, I can't see them right now, so could you please call them?
Sure. Rita Combs.
Hi, thank you for having my comment. I'm very interested to hear about the outcome of the previous meeting. And, and then there's also an item that's in the consent agenda. I hope we pull the contract for the finance contract company. Thank you.
Thank you. And the other comment.
David Cardinal?
David, go ahead.
Sure, this is really quick. When I went to try and log into this meeting, it said I'd been removed by the host presumably because you went to a closed session for the last meeting. So I had to find another computer because it wouldn't let me log in at all from that computer. So I don't know if you can reset that or how that works, but it'd be good if the two things were separate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. We'll, we'll look into that.
I can comment on that. So we apologize. The meeting was locked for closed session. It's been unlocked and people have been able to enter now.
Okay. Okay, there are, I see no more hands raised. We will move on to item six, which is reporting out of a closed session. In our closed session regarding litigation, the council agreed to agree to extend our tolling agreement with the party working now through September 11. Vice Mayor Wernikoff was not present. Councilmember Huffey was refused, so it was councilmembers Taylor, Haskell and myself. That is a report out of closed session. We will move on to the consent agenda. Are there public comments? The consent agenda are items that are usually approved by one voice vote. Members of the council can pull an item. Members of the public are allowed to comment right now and then councilmembers may elect to pull items. Is there a public comment on any item on item seven, the consent agenda? Let's see Rita's hand up. Rita, go ahead.
Yes, I sent the letter this afternoon, but I'm sure it didn't get there early enough, so I apologize for that. But I wanted to get clarification on an item that's in the packet for tonight's special council meeting. Notice that there was a contract pinpoint talent, a temporary employment agency and a letter, introduction letter that talks about previous finance contractor, monetary signing levels of the previous town manager and the change of who the finance department will be hiring from the temporary employment agency the next time. I did not see a scope of work on the description of qualifications that were needed to fulfill the position that is discussed. Is there a purchase rec associated with this contract hire? How much is that individual cost that we're trying to hire? Is there a cost associated with the agreement itself or just the individuals that we might contract from them? Are there specific tasks for this individual and what other positions have been discussed with this particular contract company? At a previous finance committee meeting, it was noted that help was needed to finish the overdue backlog of financial documents and the overdue yearly audits. The finance committee approved the finance department to hire contractors to achieve these goals. Will the proposed person work on these particular projects? You know, thank you for addressing my questions. As we move forward today, looking at possible approving, you know, you're looking at possibly approving the budget today that will start off at a deficit without the books being closed and balanced. I hope that we also look into auditing processes, not just finances, but different processes so that we can easily get to the numbers that we need to be able to close our town books in a timely matter in the future. So please review this particular process and make the potential scope of work purchase recs available to the public and the coding of projects. This will help with transparency and timeliness of our town's financial accountability. So I, I'm not clear to me if this particular item is talking about money, but the contract itself is with a contracting company. It does not show the scope of work, so it's unclear on why, you know, is it just the contracting company, but it's discussing individuals? If that could be separated so that the scope of work and we know what we're actually paying for, that would be a huge help. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I see no other hands raised for public comment on the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to pull an item off of the
I just have a couple of questions on, on E and F and they, I just want an explanation of how they do.
So you'd like to pull E and F?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other items anyone wishes to pull? Okay. So E, F and H are pulled, so I could, anything else? I could take a motion to approve items A, B, C, D and V.
They'll move.
Moved by Haskell, segmented by Huffey. Mary, make sure the microphone's close to you so people can hear you. We'll call those.
Councilmember Huffey.
Hi.
Councilmember Haskell.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Alfs.
Hi.
We just got a comment about, about people having hard time hearing. Okay, item E, the professional services agreement with pinpoint talent.
And I think E and F go together. And all I want, because I'm not used to seeing this method of contracting, I want to understand what we're actually approving or reauthorizing here and how to think about this going forward. My sense is we engage this entity to help us from time to time. So if we're going to see it several times going forward, can you explain how it works? And it seems to be a search firm or a talent provider, but I'll let you explain.
I can chime in, Cindy's going to chime in too, but it is, it is a temporary agency firm to get staffing. Very common. And at the time, we had to get finance department help. So we hired someone from this firm at the time. We didn't know that it was going to be over the $25,000 limit from the town manager, because the town manager's signing authority is $25,000. Now that it's gone over because not only did we hire one finance tech to assist, we also had Nicole who also left also. So we had to get more help also. So now we have two people helping Cindy in the finance department. That's during this budget time right now. It's really busy. We needed someone to do just basic accounting, help journal entry, assembling the warrant list. So that is why we had to get additional help. And because it went over $25,000, we had to bring it to the council to ratify the contract.
And that the reauthorization line was here? Or is that separate? The town says there is the authority for management. Those are two separate items entirely, right? So we're just ratifying something that has in fact been signed already?
Yes.
And the last question is, is this a standing contract and when they provide someone, you or staff creates the to-do list for that person or that their responsibility area?
Yes.
Okay, so it wouldn't be in an addendum because this is a general contract? Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
So the scope of the work between, when does that get transmitted to us or to them? When do they find out what the scope of the hire is?
I think that that gets into almost operational. If we need some specific amount of help that Cindy needs, we ask for an accounting tech that has certain skills that fulfill Cindy's requirements.
As far as the contract is concerned, when do we find out about the structure?
So the contract says go hire this type of person and here's the terms that you have to pay them. And then once they are identified, you say you fall into this role and there's a list of the responsibilities for that type of role, but it's not in the contract, right? That's a staff responsibility. So it's not in the contract.
Got it. Okay. Cindy, if I may, through the mayor, we have the, all the job descriptions on the website for people to reference as well if they're looking for specific duties.
Any other questions on item seven E? I gotta take public comment. Brons, yeah, we're, we're E right now.
I did want to ask, what does it cost? For the temp forty-nine fifty-four hundred per hour for, for that to go to pinpoint? What? Mm-hmm. Right? I, I guess I'm specifically asking how much does it cost us to use the agency? Yeah. Right, I'm just trying to look at the general, not, not necessarily this, but when we use them. When we hire them, so how much does it cost them? To, to use that mechanism? Yeah. Thank you.
Other council questions on seven? Public comments specifically on item seven. David Cardinal has his hand up. David, go ahead.
Sure. Well, first of all, we can't hear anything that I guess it's Cindy is trying to say. Her microphone, I think, is dead. And second, I'm still locked out of the meeting because I've been removed by a host from the private session. So I've had to go to another computer, which would be great to understand, but I can hear all of you perfectly, but I can't hear, hear her at all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. We're changing batteries right now. While we're doing that, Betsy Morgan Pollard has her hand up. Betsy, go ahead.
Hi, yes, since I'm not taking valuable time right now, given, I was going to say the same thing David Cardinal was, I would love to hear a means of reaching you because it burns your valuable time to ask Cindy to repeat everything she said, but I was quite interested to learn along with the rest of you. And I took advantage of the cap, show captions transcript, and unfortunately, nothing appeared there either. So if there's a means by which we can send you a text or an email, I'd like to, to know that because we might circumvent this in the future. Thanks so much.
Yeah, well, I'll get back to you on that. Apologize for the technical glitches. I don't see any other hands upright.
There's one more.
Christie Corley has her hand up. Christie, go ahead.
Yes, I'm hoping Cindy can talk so we can all hear. I didn't hear a word. I thought you were taking a pause. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see no other hands raised for item seven E, so I can obtain a motion. Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Huffey.
Hi.
Councilmember Haskell.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Alfs.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven F. Judith has a question.
Yeah. If, if you could just again, there seems to be a reauthorization, so if it's going to be something that we see from time to time, if you can explain how that works and how often you see it.
So this is an annual item because the state code requires that annually after one year of authorization of a treasurer, so the municipal code allows town manager act as the treasurer. So it is something that's done annually. This was done a couple of years ago. I think last year it skipped or something, but I am actually talking with Catherine about ways to make this more efficient, so we don't have to do it every year. So more, more to come on that, but it isn't, this is an annual process.
I did have a question on this. It struck me going through it's nice being really organized. That, that the the town manager has a lot of hats that they wear and including you're in charge of our safety, you're in charge of emergency response. You're in, in charge of the, you're in charge of everything. Is there any, and yet this, this particular duty has been given to you to diversify the responsibility for finance, safety as a safety precaution? So I just wanted to point that out. There's a lot of hats that this, this band that are looking at and the hiring has to wear is just one of the most important ones.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the council? Okay, so none. Is there any public comment on item seven F? I see no hands raised, so I can entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Huffey.
Hi.
Councilmember Haskell.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Alfs.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven G. Mary, have you got a question or comment?
Thank you for asking. I'll be there shortly. Name charter of the emergency preparedness meeting. I think
Oh, sorry, it was H, I'm sorry. Seven H.
It was H that I, I was doing, yeah, sorry. I was going to ask Craig if Craig could summarize the thinking on, on the amended charter and just sort of bring us up to date with what's happening with the emergency again, again, this fed into my other question, which is that the town manager has many hats, including being the one who's responsible for doing here in the middle of whatever emergency.
Yeah, so I think this is probably a larger discussion. So this is the charter revision as recommended by the emergency preparedness committee. It was, in my mind, they were looking to be more advisory and less hands-on. And I think that's a question, a larger question, but not the deceiving about, you know, how much do we want our committees to be doing? But this, this is what, this is what's come out of the emergency preparedness committee.
So that's the tone of it. And it came directly from them.
Yes, this is, I was not involved in the writing of the re, or the rewriting of the charter.
I think that was probably the central of my question.
Any other questions on this one? Public comments on this item, item seven H. Any public comments?
I have one hand.
I don't see any hands up either.
I have one hand.
Oh, okay.
Christie Corley?
I have a question on the last item. I know that Howard is forty percent manager and sixty percent public works. Is that still true? Just hoping you can answer that and if we're
We should answer that offline, Christie. Sorry, it's, it's just, this is a Q and A. But do you have, do you have a comment on the, on item seven H?
That was my question. I'm hoping you can answer. Thanks.
Any other hands raised?
I have no other hand.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I can take, in that case, a motion to approve item seven H. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Huffey.
Hi.
Councilmember Haskell.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Alfs.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to item eight A, which is the adoption of a resolution, adopting the final proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Cindy, are you presenting? Finance Director Cindy Rotos will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, oops. Is this on now? Okay. Okay, good evening. Mayor and council members, I am Starla Robinson and I've been working with both the finance department and the town manager during the last few months, and I just wanted to make some introductory comments regarding the budget tonight. Before Cindy goes through it, she will review in more detail. But I think, given the work that Cindy and I have done every last couple of months, it's become abundantly clear that we're at a critical juncture. Our, our revenues are not keeping pace with our expenses and as you know all too well, through the sheriff's new contract, it's, the imbalance is substantial. Now, the town is required to adopt a budget by June thirty this year, and so I think we've presented a practical budget to you. But I think it's a first step in what we imagine to be a three-year journey. And we will be working steadfastly on the budget during the summer and the upcoming, sorry, fiscal year. So I, I think that I just want to make sure that we all realize that this is not a normal budget year where we present a budget and we're done and we can continue on and then make minor tweaks through to you. This is just our beginning budget. We'll be working with the council during the next few months on your priorities and to continue to look for ways to streamline the budget. So just with, with that charming and lighthearted introduction, I will turn it over to Cindy to give you more details. And, and I will be available for questions if you have.
Good evening, Mayor, council and members of the public. My name is Cindy Rotos, Finance Director with the town. We are here tonight to review the proposed annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Tonight's review of the budget will go over the proposed annual budget, review fund balance and reserves and provide an update to that. Adjustments to the proposed budget as well as strategies for the path forward. At the end of the presentation, we will open up for questions and comments. The proposed budget is inclusive of the current identified council priorities such as safety, full responsibility and accountable governance, forward-thinking, planning and creating a sustainable and resilient town. At the previous council meeting held on June fourteenth, staff addressed the concerning decrease in fund balance reserves over prior fiscal year, which was initially an increase of approximately seven hundred and forty-four thousand, largely attributed to the increase in the proposed sheriff's contract. Our capital improvement program as proposed is quite modest in comparison to proposed projects in prior years. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four, the projects are focused on road improvements through the annual street resurfacing project. The majority of this project is funded by restricted funds, which specifically allocate funding for road-related improvements. Under the American Rescue Plan or ARPA, federal recovery funds were dispersed to local municipalities in this, in the state in response to the COVID emergency. The estimated remaining ARPA funds approximately four hundred and five thousand were allocated were allocated in the public safety budget to reduce the overall impact on the general fund. The proposed budget, we did not make any changes to positions, so there were no additions in staffing. There will be continued one-time general plan work. As mentioned previously, sixty percent increase in public safety costs. These costs will, are expected to continue in future in future years. Additional ongoing analysis by staff will be required to identify additional budget reductions as well as continued discussions on revenue enhancement options. The initial proposed budget reviewed at the last meeting was just under forty-nine percent of the annual budgeted operating expenditures, therefore not meeting the adopted policy of maintaining a minimum threshold of sixty percent. Through council direction and discussion at the meeting, staff identified potential items to adjust in the budget, specifically reductions to general fund expenditures to aid in reducing the overall requirement of reserves to balance the budget. Overall, the initial proposed general fund budget was reduced by just over 784,000, reducing the required $1.5 million draw on reserves to 868,000 under the adjusted budget. The budget we are reviewing tonight has a projected general fund expenditures of $8,018,245, which would require a minimum of 4.8 million under the adopted minimum fund balance reserve policy of sixty percent. The updated general fund reserves is projected to be at about sixty-two percent, following the reductions to just over 5 million. At the last meeting, staff identified potential reductions to the general fund. A complete list of these items is included in the staff report located on page fifty-seven of the council packet. A couple of significant changes to the budget are the open space funding for maintenance. In prior years, there have been discussions related to the use of open space funds to support the maintenance costs, but no identified policy on the level of support or the ongoing expectations. Due to the increasing demands on the general fund and per council direction, there is an overall reduction to the proposed maintenance cost for town-owned open space from 94,000 to 44,000. This expenditure for fiscal year 24 will be supported by the open space fund rather than the general fund at a maximum of ten percent of projected utility users' tax revenue. Further discussions on future support will be required between the Open Space Acquisitions Committee, Conservation Committee, council, and staff to develop a policy to this effect. This budget includes a reduction of twenty-five percent of the proposed work related to the fuel mitigation program, originally budgeted at 201,000 for a new budget of 125,000. In addition to the work related to the program, an allocation of 22,000 is budgeted for similar fuel mitigation work specified for town-owned parcels, as well as 30,000 for a contracted grant rider, and 50,000 to flame mapper services. The grant rider and flame mapper services is expected to be a shared cost between Woodside Fire Protection District, the town of Woodside, and Portola Valley. We will now move forward to strategies for the path forward. Some issues to monitor and consider long-term specified for revenue is to identify potential new and ongoing revenue sources. It is imperative that new ongoing sources are identified to sustain increasing expenditures. In addition to new sources, staff recommends performing a cost allocation study to ensure full cost recovery and a fee study to determine that the service fees charged under the fee schedule are appropriate. Utility, utility users' tax revenue will increase by one percent in fiscal year 2023, 24, due to the expiration of the reduced rate as of June 30, 2023. The Education Revenue Augmentation Fund, or ERAF, and vehicle license fees, or VLF, shortfall continue to impact property tax revenue, as this revenue source has been very volatile in the recent years. In prior years, the state has backfilled this shortfall and allocated funds in their budget for this purpose, but did not include funding for this in their 2024 budget. Further staff analysis is required to determine and establish the fiscal year 24 appropriations limit, a state requirement that creates a restriction on the amount of revenue that can be appropriated in any fiscal year. In addition to revenue issues to monitor and consider long-term, a deeper analysis of the increasing rate of expenditures will also need to take place. For example, funding and service-level expectations for wildfire support, ongoing discussions on open space maintenance, and policy discussion, town center facility needs in relation to the aging facility and ongoing space needs at the town hall building, as well as routine maintenance and the cost of staffing for events held at the town center. Additional discussion related to the miscellaneous consultant work budgeted for the housing, housing element post-approval plan, and as mentioned, related to revenues, also the appropriations and GAN limit as identified with expenditures. Moving forward with strategic next steps, additional discussions and negotiations continue with the sheriff's office related to the ongoing contract. Further discussion on, at the staff level, as well as council direction on revenue enhancement to include budget workshops and study sessions, as well as an update, a mid-year budget update and revision to be determined at a later date. Priorities discussion and aligning the resources with expectations, as well as aligning the priorities with the budget, and continued budget workshops and study sessions. Here's a look at our fiscal year 2023, 24 calendar in preparation of the budget. We reviewed this calendar at the last meeting as well. Following tonight's meeting and adoption of the fiscal year 2023, 24 budget, staff does intend to hold potential workshops and also have a mid-year revision of the budget. In addition to the adjustments made on the budget from the prior meeting, staff also recommends, of course, the adoption of the budget, and also council direction for staff to continue work in refining council priorities, exploring additional options for revenue enhancement, and aligning the expenditures and revenues for fiscal sustainability without the use of reserves. That concludes my presentation. At this time, I will open up for questions and comments.
Thank you, Cindy. We will begin with council questions for staff, and we will take public comment, and then we'll come back to the council for a full discussion. Questions from the council? Mary, do you have any questions? Remember to hold the microphone over you, sorry. Yeah, I understand.
I have one question about our investment management and our income, and we've never had a presentation on, on how much money we make off of our reserves. I thought that was an important part of this discussion. Looking back is not what we want to do. We want to look forward and, and I want to have a robust idea about how we're going to manage our money better. I guess the question there is, when are we going to hear about that? How much we get out of our money?
That could be a topic that we include in the budget workshops and the continued discussions with council.
Do we know? We probably know something right now.
What, what we have assumed in the budget is earnings of $200,000 for the coming year, which is consistent with this fiscal year, but I think we, we don't know what the interest rates will be in nine months, so that's our, our best guess. I, I don't know. I can't, I can't do that in my head right this second, but we can, we can certainly look at it for you. But I, I think, just, just so we know, as a reminder, we divide the interest up by fund, and so we have two large funds, the open space fund and the housing and lieu fund, and so that's where most of the interest earnings accumulate.
So my other question is, I guess, about process, which is, did we vote last time on the ten percent from the, I don't think we did.
We didn't vote on that. It was direction of staff.
It was just a discussion. I'm just thinking that we could make, that there's, is it possible, then, to change that number right now, before we okay this?
Yeah, we could, we could. Yes, we could.
I mean, should I make my comment or?
Well, why don't we, why don't you save that for discussion?
See what else. Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Craig, question?
Yeah, since we talked about this last time, so I think I have a pretty good understanding. I guess one thing that's still a little unclear to me is, what do we think this, the steady-state number is here versus, you know, what we're spending versus what we're bringing in, assuming we didn't have, like, you know, this last year, we had housing element, a bunch of fairly extraordinary costs. So if you subtract those out, but you also subtract out all the ARPA money and all these other things that we got in, which are also extraordinary, what's the difference between what we're bringing in and what we're spending?
That is also an item that we can, we can prepare for the mid-year revision. At this time, it's a little difficult to tell what the current fiscal year will end at, as we have not wrapped up all of our projected expenses and, and revenues as well. So we can bring that back. Once we wrap up, there will be a number of entries that will be completed at this year for, related to ARPA funds, so we can have a clear understanding of where we actually are and what our actuals are in related, in relation to the budget.
Okay, yeah, I guess I was looking for something a little more speculative, which is, we're going to do a full accounting, and that's great, but I'm trying to say, but take away our, take away all these one-time grants and take away all these one-time expenses, then, you know, what, what are, what are our expenses worth? Like, just in broad numbers, like, are, are we spending a million and a half more than we're bringing in? Are we spending three million? I mean, so, I'm not, I'm not going to hold you to, oh, you told me it was this number, and it's, you know, ten percent more or less. I'm just trying to get a sense for, as we think about the budget, and particularly going forward, you know, how, because, I mean, you guys have said, well, we got a serious deficit problem here. I'm trying to get you to articulate how serious that deficit is.
Okay, let me give you a shot.
Yeah, thank you.
There's, we're using $500,000 in ARPA funds this year. The county so far has forgiven half of the increase, and that's about 425,000. So if you add that 925,000 to the deficit that we're looking at of around 800,000, that gives you a broad brush. Now, you know, there are certain places we can tweak and we can look harder, but I think if, you know, that big number will tell you that there's a lot of work to do.
We're up to a million seven, so.
We're up.
I think it's, it's important that everybody understands that right now, we're, we're spending well beyond our means, and, and we've been lucky. We've had ARPA funds, and we've, we've taken advantage of, and all that's good. I just want to make sure as we worked our budget, particularly as we worked these budget workshops, in the future, if people understand what the goal is, you know, the very high level. Thank you.
Judith, questions?
Just a couple reminders. The fuel mitigation reduction by twenty-five percent, what are we giving up there? And is that something that we can, you know, realistically tolerate in place?
The reduction is actually in the actual work itself. So within the fire mitigation category, there is the fire mitigation work itself, the fire mitigation work on, which is in the right-of-way, the actual workers working in the right-of-way, what they're doing on Golden Oaks and Los Trancos, and what they did all over town on patrol. Those are the actual crews of four to six people that do fire. So within that category, there's also 20,000 allocated for open space lots that we work on, and then also the flame mapper and the grant rider, too. But what got reduced is the actual work, fuel mitigation in the right-of-way.
Yeah, I mean, it's summertime, the grass is getting brittle. I'm just trying to understand what we're trading off there.
So on, on grasses, we have our own program. Let me separate what we in public works usually do and then what the fire mitigation. We do the main roads, such as Portola, Alpine, Los Trancos. We do the right-of-way, which is the fourteen feet required on either side for grass mowing. However, for decades, a lot of things grew in the right-of-way, because the right-of-way could vary from five feet to thirty feet off the side of the paved edge. Those are the things that they're concentrating on with the fire marshal going, we need shaded field breaks, we need to lift all the trees and vegetation up six feet, remove some of the volunteers and invasive. That hasn't been done. Those, that work was done on Portola and Alpine over the last three years since the program started. So we're now on Golden Oaks right now, and so what are we losing? I mean, the last time we looked at this, we looked at the nine-year finish for all the hundred and nine streets in town. So by decreasing it, we're essentially, all we're doing is extending it out. If, if we're only decreasing this one year, we decided to increase it next year, it would be just that.
Okay, that, that's very helpful. Thank you. And then a question on the sheriff's contract. I think last time, you were making the assumption that the extension under the current contract would be at the current rate entirely, and would that confirm? That, that's amazing.
My one question is kind of an extension of Judith's question, which is the, the road resurfacing budget. Are you sort of anticipating, I guess, if we were to pare back the road resurfacing budget, if that were an option, I mean, I can't remember now if it is, but, I mean, I believe our PCI is, which has been in the eighties, would we at some point have to, like, if we started spending less on annual road resurfacing, would we start seeing our PCI score drop and help quickly?
Yes, it'll take, because our PCI is pretty high, up to two percent. We're like at the seventy-eight, seventy-seven, seventy-eight. You know, it does take time, because of the, you know, the sources that we did, they last six, seven years. It does take time, but once after it takes time, then you'll see a rapid drop in PCI, and then we're going to have to build it back. You know, we talk about budget for, budget for resurfacing. I mean, there are restricted things, and then there is a maintenance of effort that we have to match. It's almost like a, you have to spend this much to get this much. And I think the maintenance of effort for the current project, I can't recall off the top of my head, but I thought it was maybe
It's about 130,000.
Hundred and thirty thousand. Budgeted was almost a million dollars. This is, this was a, we're trying to do a section of that. So the bids came in high, we're going to, you know, plan right now to reject the bids, try to rebid back out in the middle of the time. So for cash flow, you know, we're going to push that off. But once again, that's, those are restricted funds specifically. But once again, that's, those are restricted funds specifically that we have to spend on transportation and matching that capital show for maintenance of it.
So now I know, you know what a PCI is.
They've been conditioned.
And 15 is, 15% is means bad?
Yeah, we're typically in the top 15 in the Bay Area. I have to take a look at it.
So we're in good shape right now.
We are. We've always, historically, we've maintained one of the higher PCI's in the area. If we were to spend less on it, that would start dropping and then it would drop very quickly if we let too many roads get too far.
Just to add to that, we, you know, for X number, for a number of years, we fixed a lot of the major roads with overlay. Asphalt overlays could vary from an inch, inch and a half, two inches. And then once you fix everything in town, what you want to do is slurrise, preventative maintenance. And that's the mode we're kind of in right now, which is, you know, thin slurrise, which is a lot cheaper. And it allows us to do many more streets, such as 15 streets. So when you start going into asphalt overlay, we're only talking one, two. So it's a balance of what we want to do on the PCI level. Just the caution that if we lower the PCI, it might be very hard to expensive to bring the PCI.
It could cost us a lot to get it back. Okay, if there are no other questions from the council, and I'll take public comments. Are there questions from the public? Okay, I see Karen's hand is up. Go ahead, Karen.
Hi, as most of you know, wildfire is one of my favorite subjects. I was a little bit surprised to see two new line items appear in this budget that wasn't in the former study session. And I had a comment and a question about each of those. In terms of grant writing, it would be great if we could get grants. I know we've tried several times. Our former town manager applied to one and also a very, you know, national program. I can't remember the name, Community Wildfire, the Montana folks came in and applied. And in their conclusion, they said 90% of the grants are going to disadvantaged communities. So although it sounds great to hire a grant writer, I am not sure what grants they could apply for and what are the chances of success. The person that has had success is Denise Ania with Fire Safe San Mateo, and that's primarily about vegetation. So I'm not against it, but perhaps we need to look at it a little bit more thorough before we jump into it to make sure there's something feasible. The second comment I had about fire was a question about flame mapper. So this is a new line item appearing today. And I have commented publicly at Woodside Fire that I was concerned about how they were normalizing their scales to to the CAL FIRE maps, because, you know, very high in there didn't mean very high in CAL FIRE. So is that what this large amount of money is going to? And what is that? What is that? Why are we spending more money on flame mapper when Woodside Fire had that budget line before? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. David Cardinal, go ahead.
Hi, first, my apologies for the audio. I'm still locked out on my computer, so I'm using my phone. I had the same similar question about flame mapper. As far as I know, the only output from them were some slides in January presented to WFPD after a fairly large contract. And those were preliminary and ignored by everyone from what I can tell. And now it's almost six months later and I haven't seen anything. I would love to get maps from them, especially because we could then dump the argument about the Maritz maps because their maps are supposed to replace them. But without an update, I wouldn't give them another penny until somebody explains to me what they're doing, what they've delivered, when they can finish the Woodside Fire contract and what else we'd get, would be my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Rita Combs.
Hi, just a couple of comments about, you know, these items for the road resurfacing. You know, everyone in our town tries to maintain their home and the people that are getting new houses built or houses repaired, you know, there's lots of big trucks. And we also have problems with land movement and our roads need that attention. You know, and especially in case of an emergency, but some of our roads are buckled and people are going to their homes and the roads are buckled. And next question is, are we getting money back from services that we're doing for, you know, even for Stanford and other businesses? Are we getting money back? The only thing I see is on that revenue that we're getting in is, you know, for fees and fines or for miscellaneous revenue, 620, you know, are we getting money back? And for the investment, at the last finance meeting, one of the members of the finance committee talked about how we were missing out on about $37,000 a month in, on the money, some of the money that we have in reserves, that's not generating any interest income. So he said, I believe it was like 20-something that we're getting every month right now. But then with the other money, it was about 32 or $34,000 we would be getting every month. And I don't know if that's been looked into. Thank you for whomever added the investment policy for the town into the packet for today. And my other question, after looking at that, the contract, the two, there was two contracts that were in the packet earlier for the consent agenda, is, are we auditing our contracts that we have on file? You know, how are we doing that if we're not auditing our regular finances? Are we auditing our policies and different contracts we're having? Do we have, you know, I'm sure people in town would gladly volunteer to help read through some of these contracts and tighten some of these things up. But are we doing that? Other towns that have been auditing these type of contracts and whatnot in the past couple of years have made some nice corrections to benefit the town. And I hope that our town does that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Betsy Morgan Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Allison. Hi, council members. You know, you're in a pickle here trying to make a budget for the coming fiscal year without the benefit of our incoming town manager, whose appointment is just, it's only about six weeks out. And when you add to that, the budget information we've been afforded has been delayed. We've received partial information only. The decision that you're being asked to make is really quite challenging. So given the critical juncture and substantial year-over-year budget shortfalls, I really believe our new town manager will want to have a say about sharpening the pencils across every town department and studying the staffing levels across those departments too. So while you have before you what is a one-year budget, it really makes a lot more sense at this juncture to take a two-year approach, I think. And I want you to be able to see at a glance the implication, the implications of this year's decisions, of decisions that you are going to be making tonight on next year. I always want you to be able to see at a glance those implications, but I especially do now. So for all the above reasons, as the town did in 2020, 2021 fiscal year, I urge the council to approve an interim budget for further review over the course of the next months. And one more forward-thinking recommendation, let's please identify a town manager with outstanding financial credentials and maybe even open gov experience. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Betsy. Allison Ilitch, go ahead.
Hi, gosh, I actually, I really liked Betsy's idea for a two-year budget. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I'm actually reacting to something that Craig Taylor, in Craig Taylor's question that he asked earlier. What I think would be really helpful for the council to have immediate access to is a breakout of the services and supplies number. It's about 48% of the budget. There's a whole lot in there. And it's really interesting to look at the trends from 2021 all the way up through the proposed budget now. And I think that there, you might find an opportunity for ways to look, not just this year, but definitely 2024, 25, how you can see some of those costs being reduced. So I would just recommend that. I think it's probably pretty easy for Cindy to pull that out of open.gov and get that to you guys because it's, you know, it's a big part of the budget and it'd be good to see that broken out. Thanks.
Thanks, Allison. Christy Corley, go ahead.
Thank you. We are looking for revenue and I believe Portola Valley should realize their own land value when we rent out our land to businesses that need to use our land. We should definitely increase the annual contract to these business, businesses that we can get revenue from and rewrite those contracts right now if there's no date on those contracts. I know that some are 10 years old and out of, well, need to be rewritten. And I would encourage you to get more revenue from those land use business contracts. Then I was disappointed to hear that the main roads' fire prevention would be decreased by $100,000. I actually thought 200 or a little over $200,000 was too low for fire prevention on our main streets. I do know that Tahoe Donner has a five-year plan to maintain all their roads. And I've heard Jeremy say his goal was to have a five-year rotation plan. And I was kind of shocked to hear that we wouldn't hit all our roads the way we'd like to by a nine-year rotation. So I think we're going the wrong direction in fire prevention and I would like you to look at that and further. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands from the public. Vice Mayor Warren Acuff is commenting. Just to be clear, she's commenting as a member of the public right now. Sarah, go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I don't have a lot to add beyond the comments that I submitted earlier this afternoon. So I'm assuming everybody's had a chance to review that. I would just, you know, echo Starla's comments about us being at a critical juncture and at the start of what's likely to be a three-year process, not, you know, a single budget cycle process and that we should be looking at opportunities to defer or cut discretionary spending across the board, you know, starting tonight. And in my comments, I outline six areas, fuel mitigation, attorney's fees, the post-approval process, committee budgets and the Willow Commons Fee waiver, where I had recommendations for how we should approach it on those items. So that's all I have to add in addition to the letter that was submitted. So thank you.
Right, thanks, Sarah. I see no other hands up from the public and there are no members of the public in the schoolhouse tonight. So I'll bring it back to the council for discussion.
I can start. Possibly quite an unpopular say, but I think we should, my thought is that we should increase the, that we should not give the conservation effort to maintain our open spaces. And one way of doing that is increasing the percent we take from the sand to make them almost whole. And the reason why I think that is that preserving the conservation value of our open spaces is extremely important because that's kind of our priority. And because safety is one of our priorities, it's good to have these carefully managed open spaces that fulfill both our desire for wildfire safety and geological safety, but also our desire to have truly environmentally sound practices because it's something we can afford to do and we should do it. I think it's, our open spaces are one of our main offerings to our surrounding communities, both in terms of environmental services, clean air, clean water, et cetera, but also in terms of recreational and just kind of good beauty. So I would suggest of increasing the draw of, at least for the next, I'm just going to say two years, say three years, to 20% instead of 10%. And maybe I should even say 25% and then it would truly make them whole. And one of the main reasons, I would say, another one that's not really been mentioned and not when we think about it, dog pond, et cetera, that we don't remember the incredibly steep extra lots that we have here and there around town that are grossly over and complete, like, half of the west of our, in Westridge, off of the Coffee Trail. There's a lot there that's probably never been cut. Comes right out, right up into Westridge. So that's our obligation. I don't think we should shortchange the conservation effort. So that's a weakening, but it's in, you know, it's sort of goes against me because we've been trying to facilitate this open space trust. But really, right now, we have an existential environmental crisis, which we're trying to do something about. And this is something we can do now. And I think it's worth doing. So that's one. Maybe I'll get other comments coming on. I totally loved everything that the public said and I wish we could capture every word of them. I think the two-year budget is a great idea, the interim budget is actually basically what we're talking about anyway, right? We're talking about the re-revisiting, so just a different way to label it. It might make people feel more comfortable. Not a big clam, but fan of flame makers, flame maker, mapper, thank you. And I would agree with that. I wouldn't have Denise Ania can write us some grants. That's fabulous. I wouldn't give that up for anything. But I also thought that that we probably have some pretty good grant writers right here in town who would love to do, write some grants. If you just put it on the forum, I bet we could get people to do some. And it's actually quite a good job. Okay, I think increasing work on the ground is a terrible idea in general. It's not the time, it's not the time, it's not the place. And we can cut anything, I think, but our workers in the those people are critically important. And we can, we can do a lot ourselves, but we can't do it all. I think they really need us. I didn't cut too many things, but I thought the council itself could do some tightening of itself. And I think that parts of that could probably do some tightening too. And that will find lots more opportunities as we move along.
So first of all, I definitely would like to see some kind of mid-year budget review. I think that that's critical given the set of decisions we have to make. And personally, I feel like a lack of information on some of these issues. So I'll look forward to, you know, having some of these budget workshops and being able to sort out some of the details. But I definitely look forward to that and I would like us to plan for a mid-year budget. With that, I would say I'm opposed to anything more than 10%. With that, I would say I'm opposed to anything more than ten percent on UUT. And I think we should limit it to one year. And I think we should give Conservation and Open Space Committee is an opportunity to discuss understand what the issues are. You know, we brought this up for the last meeting and I understand we're trying to close some budget holes. And I talked through with the Open Space Committee and they understand that. But I think we need to also understand, you know, what is what it is that we're trying to do. I mean, the conservation stuff started as a three-year pilot and now it's become an ongoing significant expense. And although I'm totally on board with our open space, I love our open space. I think we need to look at what we're getting for our money because it's not that the open space is going away. And it's not that it's turned into a six-foot-high weed pile. It's a question of if we mow it two times. No, but it's not. I mean, we already mow it. So it's not, we're not doing nothing. It's going to be, do we mow it once or do we mow it four times a year? And do we do weeding and do we have a biologist? So I think there's a big range in there and I think it deserves discussion. So given this particular year where we know we have a large deficit, I think it's appropriate that we cut that budget back until we better understand what we as a town can afford. So that's UUT. Sarah wrote a, you know, I thought a pretty informative note and I'd like to comment on some of those. She started with the hundred and eighty-five K in lieu versus the general fund. And I still believe it should come out of the general fund until we come up with a, you know, program for using funds. And the reason I believe that is we've clearly told petitioners that we couldn't give them money because we didn't have a policy. And now we're saying, oh, but we, the council can take money because we want to take money. I'm very opposed to when government behaves differently with themselves than with their residents. So I would still be against that. And I totally believe it will come out of the in-lu fund eventually. So to me, this is somewhat a shell game. But I'm willing to have us have a slightly lower reserve and take us out of the general fund until we get our in-lu process defined. In terms of both the grant writer and the flame mapper, you know, Sarah's suggesting that we keep the full three hundred K in the budget, but that we defer those. I don't know what I think about keeping the full three hundred K. I would say without understanding what we want from the grants, who's going to coordinate them, who's going to make the decisions about what grants to go after. It's hard for me to justify at this juncture a thirty K grant writer. So I guess it's somebody, you know, maybe at this mid-year budget review, it'd make more sense. We could actually look and we could we could define better what grants we thought we could go after. Because certainly people I've talked to, a lot of people say, yeah, you could go after these things, but you're not going to get them. Well, if that's the case, you know, why are we spending thirty K on a grant? In terms of flame mapper, it's a similar thing. I mean, I think we really understand what what is it that we're getting from flame mapper? You know, if we get a high-resolution version of a map similar to what Cal Fire is doing, this seems like an appropriate expense. But if we're getting a prioritized map for mitigation, then that's something that the fire department needs. But I'm not sure that that serves the town. So I'd like to better understand exactly, you know, what the work product is from flame mapper. So I'd be tempted to defer that and better understand, you know, where we're going. But but I'm open on that particular one. In terms of post-approval housing element, I would suggest fifty K. You know, we've sort of discussed this. Judith and I spent some time discussing it.
So are you
You go ahead.
A higher amount in under was the threshold development allocation. So which are you?
So the threshold development.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you for the clarification. I don't have a strong opinion on holding the committee budgets flat. I just need to understand what the consequences are. And I take Sarah, I mean Sarah's point that, you know, we had it at three hundred K for this last year. We obviously had a lot of legal work to do. We knocked it back to one eighty. We have pending lawsuits. I'm not sure where that comes out. One eighty maybe is too low, but three hundred sounds a little bit too high. So those are my sort of offhand comments.
I just want to clarify, Cindy, the one eighty, to get to the reserve that you did, we're over sixty percent under your budget, right? But what did you do with Willow Commons? I was digging and I couldn't find it. Where is it in your budget right now coming under?
Right now in the budget, it's actually coming out of, as discussed, the general fund. And and just to clarify also, that is a reimbursement that was included in the warrant list. So it has already taken place and it's actually accounted for in this current fiscal year budget. If there will be a reimbursement, then that will be applied in the future. Sorry to that one. That will be applied in the future year budget once the policy is decided upon and we move forward with reimbursing the general fund out of housing that will take place in that fiscal year.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, it came out of general fund.
No.
Originally it came out of general.
Original, yeah.
Thank you because I thought I missed it.
Sure. So the reimbursement has already taken place. It was included in the current warrant list that was included in this agenda. That has been dispersed from the general fund.
Still catching up with your visit. Yeah, but it is done. Yeah, it is done.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Based on that, I'm just going to comment on some of the ideas that have been explained so far. I do agree with the mid-year review. I think we don't have enough information on some aspects and we do need to develop plans for revenue. And therefore I'm looking at what we're doing today as step one of a few steps. And agree that two to three years to get to the right place and to have a more robust plan is a reasonable expectation. I mean, it is where we are today versus where we want to get to. We want to get there as quickly as possible, but it's not going to happen today. So I think we should plan for that. I think we have on occasion discussed having a multi-year budget, like a longer-term budget. But we can't do that today either. We can have it as something to wrap into our process. And having a longer-term vision is a good goal. But again, I want to be very practical. It's the twenty-seventh. We're not doing, I don't think we should be dealing with that today other than recognizing it as a a good thing to get to eventually. I would keep the UUT well, I'm sorry, I'm going to mix and match here. Forgive me for the terminology. Lack of clarity here. I would not raise the ten percent reduction from open space to twenty. I would keep it at ten. I am fine with one year because I think we do need to look at that and understand what's going on. I think the Conservation Committee needs to talk to open space. I think we will all be better off if they can figure out what we're, what the priorities are with input from both committees. But but I would keep it at the ten percent. I I don't want the open space fund to start to be tapped beyond that without a lot of public discussion and we don't have time for that.
It's lowering the accumulation rate. It's not. You would go from a four hundred thousand dollar to a three hundred or six hundred thousand dollar.
No, and if that makes sense. If that makes sense going forward, I think we should have that discussion. But tonight, I don't feel I understand why I would make that change. Okay, so then I would keep I wouldn't touch what you've done with Willow Commons right now. You've done it. I think we have a plan to revisit it. The inclusionary fund policy will be coming forward. We're going to get there and I'm confident that we will. And it will, we'll do the right thing in the future. And that's a one-time issue. So the the windows when the grant writer and flame mapper decision needs to be made. I don't understand if we defer it. Like, are we missing a window of opportunity that we're going to regret? Or is this something that we could equally do now versus, you know, January? Do you have any sense of that?
I don't provide a schedule. But so on the flame mapper, we'll have to find more information on where it is or what the expected is going to be. The grant writer almost kind of the same thing, but however, if we do defer it, we do miss out on six months of someone writing grant transfers. Did speak to fire safe and Denise and Mia. The types of grants we'd be going after is things that help the fire mitigation program in the right of way. Trees in the right of way. Go with emergency prep. So there's there's multiple things that she, they were going to try. But we would lose, we would lose some time.
And the flame mapper, is that going towards the new map that we're all expecting for the end of the year? I'm sorry if I'm, to me, flame mapper is the map.
Well, there's different maps here that we're talking about and I think we need to find more information. It's not settled. That's the Cal Fire map. Flame map. So I think
But this funding would be for a map generated by flame mapper.
That we need to find, from what I'm understanding, we need to find more information. Obligating person.
We're not obligated today and we can evaluate that as we get more.
So if we keep it in the budget, all it is is a place. We're not, we're not authorized to spend right now. It's just in the budget. And then as we find out more information, we'll find out.
Yeah, because the way I look at it, I personally, I'd rather have the grant writer engaged earlier rather than later. Because if we can get grants to help us with the fire mitigation, like I would, I think the reduction that you stated seems reasonable if all we're doing is carrying out a nine-year plan. I hadn't understood that. But it's still really important, right? The sooner we can get a lot of the stuff done, the better. And to me, I'd rather have a grant writer helping us source funds from somewhere else earlier if that's the price of it. So I don't feel as strongly about that, but my instinct is that could help us jumpstart getting funding from outside of our own budget. Craig didn't think that we were going to be eligible. So I'm talking about like, if we're honestly going to be eligible, I'd rather do that. If there's skepticism about it, maybe I wouldn't prioritize it. And I'd be fine holding on the flame mapper line item until we understand it more. I don't think we, I don't have enough information. The post-adoption establishment of the thresholds, I think we've done some digging in the fifty K rather than the seventy-five K. Makes sense. We think it's going to still give some meaningful framework. And I would not hold committee budgets flat. There's only, if I understood correctly, Cindy, the twenty twenty K. It's not a huge amount.
It's ninety-five versus one fifteen.
Yeah. Yeah. And the legal fees are really hard to predict, to be honest. I understand why we put it on to be reduced because we're not at the peace housing element moment. Still, there's a lot that can come out of the woodwork. So I don't think we're going to get that right, no matter how hard we try. I'd be willing increase it to two hundred K or keep it at one eighty, but that's very much contingent on seeing where we are mid-year. So I overall, I'm being somewhat conservative to try and do, you know, keep to the budget that you prepared largely because there's been really good work to and a lot of discussion among the staff and various representatives in town. So I respect that very much, but these are the areas where where I thought we might be able to do a little bit around the edges.
Thank you. I'm going to go through this just I, you know, I agree. I do believe the Willow Commons Fee waiver will eventually be found to be consistent with our future policy, but I'm willing to wait for that. I yeah, I hesitant to pull the money out of the fuel mitigation as well. And my one question is, do we have any, do we have any other, any contractual obligation right now for flame mapper? I don't think we'd actually, we haven't formally committed anything to the fire district, right? It's just sort of an agreement that we might co-fund some of that.
There is no paper. There's no written.
Beyond the conversation. I'd be willing to wait and see because I agree that the value of that is maybe in question. Yeah, I mean, in the past, I don't think we've had a lot of success on grant writing. I I've also been told that that's changed. I mean, that there are more opportunities. The state has gotten more serious about, you know, really really concerned. And so that might be changed. I don't have a good feel yet for what the landscape looks like. So I go either way on that. Just give them pass history. But if staff has any comments on that, if you think the landscape is changing, it would be.
So when I did talk to Denise today, she was optimistic that there's no promises, but spending a thirty thousand that we get, at least get thirty thousand back now. If you want to say that the eucalyptus on Sabanti's Road, she got that grant. That's fifty thousand dollars right there. She was optimistic about it. This was kind of in lieu of, the grant writer was in lieu of fire prevention going out for we thought that this was the best route. It was a partnership that fits.
So part of our strategy would be to pay the grant writer to bring in money that might supplement that fuel mitigation budget. I, like I said, I don't look for any. I would be okay temporarily borrowing more than ten percent or taking more than ten percent of the accumulation of the open space fund to go. I mean, over the years, we've talked a lot about that, 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 that program in the open space, in our open space parcels. And Judith Murphy has argued pretty compellingly that there's a value to doing in an ongoing basis, that it costs a lot more to fix it. You want to restore natural state. I'm, I, I, I take your point about wanting to cut things back. It's one of the, it's kind of along the lines of the road maintenance where it's like you let it go for a few years and suddenly getting it back to where you want it is is a lot more expensive. I would be willing in the short term to go above the, to go to twenty percent if it would allow us to stay current on that. Discuss that more. I'd be, I think, I think I would probably, I'd probably approve the committee budget increases that were requested. And I would be willing to sort of, willing to sort of, to keep the attorney fees at a hundred and eighty and just see how it's going. And to be clear, I think there was always understanding that when we had a permanent manager in place, that person would would come back and sort of be turning a very close eye to this budget and that we'd all be doing that with them. So I think that just some of the comments publicly in here was just, yes, we were planning to, this, this budget is definitely going to be looked at more closely over the next several months. Supporting that. Actually, just Cindy, Starla, everyone, thank you for the work you've all done on this, on closing this budget gap. We've gotten to a point where we actually have a reserve that will be the reserve policy. As conservative as our reserve policy is, I actually, by this, we're still following it. So thank you. A lot of work went into getting that level. As conservative as our reserve policy is, I actually, by this, we're still following it. So thank you. Um, a lot of work went into getting that level. My comments. More discussion. But.
Oh, I, I don't totally understand this threshold and what, what, where the threshold of. But that is all about.
The CEQA is part of the post adoption process. Where we proposed to do two things, the council adopted it in principle. One is have local CEQA guidelines, which is a more, more modest amount of work. The other is to establish local thresholds of, of significance. And you can, we've had some discussions on what that means, and I think there's more of an ability to scope it. To what we can do than we have to.
And so how, how are the expenses tied to that logic? What's more expensive? What, what makes it, where does that fit into the budget?
It's under the post adoption plan. There's a line items for threshold establishment. And it was, it was 75 in Cindy's project. We're saying we think we can get it to 50 and, and with that.
Great. Thank you. That was one thing. The other, the other thing, uh, is, uh, I keep, uh. And I know how it probably keeps, uh, feeling these too, but, uh, Woodside has matching funds for residents taking down their flame, uh, their flammable fire. And I keep wondering why that isn't both cost effective and why we can't have it too, so to speak. Because at least you get those flammable fires down and guess what? Residents pay for half of it.
It's, um, it's $2,000 per property. So it matches the first, Woodside, I believe they matched the first 2,000 each time. I guess.
They're all about 30,000 to take them down.
Well, and most properties are going to spend a lot more than 30,000. It's true that, yeah.
But I think it's an incentive.
It is. We've talked about it over the years and it was just, didn't, didn't, I guess, the general. If I were to summarize 10 years of conversations about it is that, is that, short answer is it wasn't the best bang for our buck in terms of. You do that, you sort of get these piecemeal people coming in who are just doing work anyway. Um, versus putting that money into our funds for, for right of way there. I mean, like, if we were to do a lot of those $2,000 per parcel thing, we'd get clearing in places that might not be that important for us, sort of strategically, so to speak. Whereas we can direct it ourselves into the right of way. And so it's just been sort of a thought that, that because we have limited resources, we thought it was better off, we, we were sort of directing it into the public spaces that we thought were very valuable, especially. You know, along our, our exit routes during fire. We want to keep those clear. And so this nine year plan. Yeah, nine years is a long time to go through all the roads. The part of the reason that we can do it within nine years, not longer, is that we're not giving out a lot of extra money to parcels that are. Might have no, very little value to the public in terms of.
Things that's been suggested is that we prioritize the trees that need to be cleared off of private properties. And then, and then fund those as we are able, uh, as a, as, or at least.
I believe we have a list of trees that, I mean, I, we've, we've had a list of targets. Denise certainly worked on one.
Isn't that stuff that's in the road right away? Those, that list of trees?
Uh, didn't work.
Just in the road right away, but how are you going to speak to?
Yeah, so the EPC has a list and then Don and staff put together a list, but those lists are only. For the items in the towns right of way.
Are, are we talking about increasing the budget here? What, what are we talking about?
No, well, Mary was asking about the 2,000.
Trying to figure out other ways to mitigate.
Yeah.
Now, we're cutting it out on mitigation.
I mean, I, I, I've always, I've, I've always, I've been, I've preferred to, to, to sort of keep our funding for fire intact and under our control as opposed to sort of handing out to other companies.
What it's worth I do with that.
I was, I was trying to answer Mary's question.
Then, yeah.
So Denise, I'd speak to you too. Um, yep. So. I, I don't think the analogy between the PCI and the open spaces is a good one. In the sense that some of this is hiring a biologist to do stuff that they haven't done before. I mean, this isn't ongoing maintenance where you're maintaining something so you don't have larger maintenance costs in the future. They already, we, I mean, there, there's no proposal here that doesn't cause mowing in all the open spaces that we're already doing. This is getting a biologist and weeding. This is trying to bring back natives. So, so I, I'm, I'm fully supportive of the goal. I just feel like. There, the two committees need to have, to do the space of a fulsome discussion. To sort of sort this stuff out. I mean, and I think there's a place there, but I really think it's important that the two committees have some time together. And that's why I proposed that we do this for one year. And then we expect that in one year, they're going to come back with a proposal. But that everybody can say, you know, we've talked about this, we've made some different, you know, trade offs and we think this is a reason to operate. Um, and we can also look at like, I mean. How important is it that we move all these open spaces to their perfect natural wildfire? And, and, and we may pick them, like, you know, we may say that spring down seems too important. And we could start going through them, but you know, maybe high up in the Larry Lane Trail isn't as important. So I think that those discussions and having sort of a strategic view is pretty critical. And I guess that's why I'm, was, you know, we talked about this last time, like 10% is already doing something that we said we weren't going to do. We weren't going to use open space fund for maintenance. And so this was sort of a way of saying, look, we're in a hard place. We want to keep maintenance going forward and we should have this discussion because maybe we made the, the wrong decision back. You know, eight years ago or so when we decided not to use open space funds for maintenance. So I think it should be an open discussion. I just don't feel like we should increase it at this time.
I mean, I, I agree with you on the one year conversation. Um, you want to do, you want to basically fund them at, at, have, happen what they're asking for and I'm okay funding them with all they're asking for. But I, either way, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not, I, I agree with you that the one, the, the longer term process is more important.
Yeah. And I, I, I sort of feel like this is belt tightening time. And so I, I would say everybody can tighten their belt. For, for, for a year and then we'll figure out where we want to get revenue, if that's what we choose to do, or we'll tighten belts more. I mean, it could be one or the other.
Chad had an open point on the, the grant.
The grant writer, yeah. I mean, it's not a huge amount of money. I, I'm, I'm okay going forward with it. And, 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 you know, for a year and seeing what it seems.
Yeah, I would be okay with that, um, with the caveat that before we commit funds to it, that there is a written list of the kinds of, um, grants we're going after. Um, particularly because if it's helping with clearing around the road right of ways. I believe we're going to pay for that anyway, and that seems great. If it's trying to go $2,000 per property. You know, maybe that's a good thing, maybe it's not, but if we don't control what the grant writers are going after, we just spend 30K and they go after something. We don't necessarily think it's a good thing. So that would be my only ask from that is that before we actually commit the funds, that there is a list of, you know, the kinds of grants. It doesn't have to be down to this particular organization, but you know, if it's road clearing, then that'd be one kind of grant. If it's giving money to homeowners to clear their property, that'd be another kind of grant. And I'd like to see that loose before.
And even just potential forces. I mean, are we going to state for them? Are we going to the federal government at this point?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's fairly standard, right? And, and when you hire a grant, grant writer, is that?
Yeah, that, that's, that's reasonable to ask, to provide guidance on what kind of grants that we're looking for. And I do want to add one thing. I, I know I mentioned Denise and Mia's name. It's not guaranteed that that's our grant writer. In fact, you look at the fire safe, she most likely not be the one, but she said that there are plenty of other grant writers that are out there. Never mention that. But I think it's usable to state exactly these other things that we're.
A, a grant that you can get for things like trail construction, that we're not looking, we're not applying. Uh, and, uh, so I'm just wanting to make sure we, we look at all different sources of possible revenue. And, and that we don't cut back on it. That we actually, um.
Is it 30K? Is that, are we going in on a grant writer? Like it's our 30K plus other people putting money in? So who's the, I guess the question I'm trying to ask is, who's going to coordinate this? Like if there's a list of here are the grants you're going to go after, who's the person who says, okay, I'm responsible for going after these specific grants?
But I can work with, to find out on that. It is one third. It's. Fire, uh, fire prevention and woods, and a town of Woodside in the mass.
Okay, and, and just.
I think.
Okay, but I guess all I would ask then is, let's say that the fire department in Woodside go, we want to go after, you know, getting funds to fund homeowners to do, um, fire mitigation in the property. Do we not, does our 30K not go into, like, how do, how does this stuff get sort of, um, adjusted to the priorities that we have? Yeah, do we opt in? Yeah, exactly.
So you may, you gave the example of the fact that Denise just got us there because we, we weren't paying any of that.
Well, the fire saved, but yeah, but that, and that's fine. That took down the eucalyptus and I think we would have, you know, a list of things we thought were important. I think we would have said that was.
That was interesting. Why, why are we seven to six of that?
Because there's lots of road right of way clearing. Like if we could get more, another 30,000, this would instantly pay for itself. And if all it did was take down more trees in the town right of way, that would be worthwhile. So if that's what we're doing with it, I'm on board with it. But like I said, if it's something else that we don't know about, I, I just, again, our budget's tight. I just don't think we have extra money to fund things that aren't directly what we need now.
So we would, I mean, we could, I, I would leave in the budget that then when, when, when the fire district and, and Woodside want to come back with an actual, like they have a person targeted and that person writes some sort of proposal saying, these are the grants we're targeting. We approve or we could, we could opt out of that at that point.
Well, I can start discussions. I don't know if you want me to just take that message when we do that or bring it back.
That, that our priority would be more of sort of right of way. We're not just something like a, or, or do you want to direct them?
I, I don't know how it works. I mean, I would think that if we're splitting costs, we would have a mechanism where lenders can opt out. Or require shared costs only if we all want a project. And if that's the way it works, it does, I don't think we have to define today, you know, you just naturally say it would be fire or, or whatever it is.
It's kind of a license to hunt. And so it's like the three jurisdictions have to agree. They just have to agree that we're all hunting the same thing. And so if we came back and they said, no, this is our top priority to get property by property funding, you might say no.
Yeah.
Whereas if they're thinking they want to clear right of way or, or like large slots of open space, we probably would have gone the other path.
I just don't know the mechanism to convey that or make sure that we're not tipping in on something we're not enamored of.
So I, I think I believe I can just broadcast that message that when we do go into, uh, discussions and, and ironing those things out, that. Basically the plan to set these other directions.
So I think we're agreeing we could leave that in the budget with the understanding that, that if we, if we work to, if it weren't to our satisfaction, we would. Uh, what else? If we, apart from we moved the needle in this discussion, was there any changes we made that have put us above or below, or?
By my tally, uh, you've reduced the 75,000 for, uh, post housing element work to 50,000. So we're down 25,000.
Is that the only sort of material change we, we, we've thrown a lot of things out here and I'm trying to keep track of what we've actually said we're going to do and not do, and that's the one.
Well, I think flame, flame mapper is the other.
Yeah.
So our, the question is, are we going to leave that in the budget? Do we take it out and assume that at the mid-year we put it back in if we better understood it? And I don't know. I, I don't know the right answer. I don't know if you leave it in and you just don't spend it unless we're happy with what it's being spent on. Much like we just talked about the grant writer.
Yeah.
Or you take it out and just say, look, if, if we get to September or October, then whether we do the mid-year review. At that point, we're willing to strongly consider putting it back in. So I think we could take either path. Obviously one would drop 50,000 out of a, a media budget. It seems like a good thing, but I'm, I guess I'm pretty.
So here's. I'm learning about what that is, what flame mapper is. I think you're ahead of me on the learning curve. Um, but there has been in the housing element and the safety element process, a lot of references to the flame mapper now. And I've always assumed we knew more about it than I think we do at this point. So I'm a little hesitant to take it out of the budget because it's been part of the discourse of our general plan up till now. I don't necessarily believe we have to spend it if we don't find it of interest unless you tell me we have to lock and load no matter what. Um, and, and commit to spend it today. I, I'd keep it in the budget, but evaluate whether it's. The tool for us.
No, I'm comfortable with that.
I do have a question about the philanthropy. Uh, council does, whether that, uh, is in this budget or not. Whether that can be taken out for next year.
There were, there, there were 20,000, $21,000 in requests from nonprofits, which we've been funding sort of on a regular basis every year. We reduced it, I think, to 15 at one point. That's still in there.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, it was back, it was a steady question.
Yeah, but, so I didn't, I didn't understand why that happened separately from this budget discussion. Uh, and, uh, and whether we can take that out for next year.
I, I, well, I would. I don't like taking those out because they sort of, they, they, I mean. There's, there's a, I'll call it goodwill we build up in the community and the county and around, but I mean, it's a small amount of money that, 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 that goes to organizations that I think by and large do good work. And it, I mean, part of it's our reputation. I'll put it that way. I mean, if we suddenly just start pulling these contributions, I, I, I think, I think it damages us in the long run in terms of working with other communities. I mean, I think, I think San Mateo County is unusual in terms of how close, how well the jurisdictions work together. You go to Santa, I was just talking to somebody in Santa Clara County yesterday and, I mean, it's, it's, it's night and day. And part of that is just the fact that we do work together on things like these funding requests. My two cents is it's, it's $15,000. Yeah, yeah. Well, some of those organizations go through the entire county and I think maybe in other counties and, and make similar request. It's, and it's, it's a, you know, it's a small amount to us, but it's significant. I mean, it's that aggregate stream is significant for the organization.
Yeah, I, I would add further. I mean, I think we get to mid-year budget, um, because we scaled back to Epic, which is our local, um, ready and cert program. Because we just, they just sort of asked us for money without any real explanation. I think at the time we said, come back with a better explanation of how you're going to spend our money. I mean, that would be our most local, um, donation. So with the mid-year review, I would be willing to move it, if, if they came back with a justification for their money, I'd be willing to move it back to what they asked for originally. It just, we didn't have it at the time we were making the decision. So, so I think we potentially could add to the charitable. I also think that as a, as a well-off community, I, I do think it speaks badly when you say you're not willing to make any charitable commitment. It's just, it's like bad optics if nothing else. It's 15. I know, but it's, you're talking $15,000 against 1.7 million. I mean, they're so far apart that I think that the importance of supporting the community for that small amount. Like, I mean, if it were $500,000, I'd be on board if it would be, that's more than we're going to say, but 15, I, I think you're okay. But, yeah, I'll leave it to you.
I mean, we're not, are, are we doing, are we keeping our house? That's. Our own. But Gary, we all do. And, and I just got the financial profit that we are. But it's a massive profit. It was actually, we could get donations and we do.
But we're okay for now leaving the 15,000 that we remarked for the, for the session.
Oh, well, can you already cut it back?
Yeah, we did. We kept it 21.50. Is there any other guidance?
Judith, did I, did you have a question that you wanted me to answer?
No, I was just making sure that I wanted staff input if they had any on that effort. Because it, it's more of a black box to me than it probably is to you all who think about it more. I just know that I've heard about it for a long time and for it just to not be funded, to me, just doesn't feel right. But if there's new information that we have, um, I'd be open to it, but for now, until we have more information, I would just leave it.
Thank you. And, and the, the goal is to leave it as a placeholder and find out more information as it develops.
If we've discussed the points you want to discuss, I could entertain a motion to approve the bus budget for this. If we've discussed the points you want to discuss, I could entertain a motion to approve the budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
So moved. And that would be with the one change that you said for the dropping the fifty K, dropping the seventy-five down to fifty K with the pressure.
And that is the one change we're.
I think that's the one of all that, I mean, we talked about a lot of different things, but I think that's actually the one reduction. I think we decided not to make it.
We're not going to go, the fire mitigation.
I think that, I think the idea was, we're, we're, the tentative idea is that the grant funding would maybe make it some of that shortfall. And we'll, and again, it's something we could review at some point. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? I'll just thank staff again for all the work that went into this. It's a scary time to be doing this, but I feel much, I feel better after. From last meeting to this meeting, I feel a lot better about where we're at. And we have a lot of work to do, but we'll take it a moment. So. Do you need a roll call though? Roll call though, please.
Councilmember Hafdi. I'm going to abstain. I, I, I don't feel comfortable with the budget. I'm not going to vote against it, but I, because I think I'm, I haven't been adequately.
Councilmember Haskell.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Mayor Alps.
Aye.
Motion coming.
Thank you.
And I would just say, thank you for all you guys' hard work.
Yeah.
I, I'm looking forward to some better budgeting tool that we can all work together on. But, but that's, you know, but I really appreciate how much effort you guys put into getting us a budget tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I thought we would take a break. We'll, we'll restart at nine o'clock on. Back in. All right. Thank you. As you can see, the schoolhouse is empty except for us. And we have twelve attendees on Zoom. So we'll move on to item nine, which is, no, sorry. Yeah, item nine, which is liaison and regional agencies reports. Do you want to pull one of their reports?
I, I really had fun. Sorry, I, I. All right. I, let me just pull this up. I have the trails committee who met and they had missed one meeting. So the general gist of it was horse fair, great success, four hundred people over three hours. Line continued for the carriage ride, which was quite popular and photogenic. There, there was a little bit of feature work to do on messaging about use of the baseball field because apparently they weren't supposed to use that baseball window. I, I don't think it was that. I thought I heard baseball, but maybe I was wrong. But they have to work out the logistics on messaging on use of the public field during that time.
I think, I think it's a softball field. People are using the field while there's, while there's an event going on.
I think that, that was it. I think it all still worked very well. There is.
There, it was basketball.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Because I had, we had all kinds of activities and people would come and give.
Oh.
Move them off, but I think the softball was less, was less.
Oh, was that?
It was also.
Yeah, I think.
That's a good danger.
Yeah, a couple of logistics to work out. They reviewed work on the trails that it's now the season to prepare or starting the season. So Howard is all over that. But there's a decent amount of work because some of those trails were really devastated by the storms. A lot of people thanking the maintenance crew on the PV connect responsiveness with regard to trails issues, which is nice to hear. There is ongoing efforts surrounding forming a, an archive for information relating to trails. Like this miscellaneous stuff, like where did this trail come in? As they're looking for safer to school, they're, they're doing some research and they don't want to have to redo it. But the question is how to form a database that's, you know, useful. So they're, they're working that through, Howard. I don't think they have a way to do that yet. It's just conceptual that they'd like to. They want to figure out how to make website updates related to trails a little easier to find. And they want to do some digitization of the trail map. So those types of efforts are ongoing. They are also reaching out to the bicycle production committee to try and exchange ideas around that Alpine area where it's, it's have to cross and cross again. I, that's been going on for years. I, I think it's something that we're looking to the woods property to solve in part, but that won't happen for years. So, you know, understandable frustration that, that things move slowly there. But I think a lot of people in town want the pressure on, is this really the best configuration for that area, even in the short term? So it's here they're talking. Then the other one, the, the ASCC had a very quick meeting regarding going over the eighty-five percent rule and for reconfiguring, but they were very comfortable with it being the right thing to do for the property to avoid a lot more grading. So it's a pretty quick meeting. And the, the, the members were there. That was last night in the afternoon.
Sorry, I'll talk into the mic.
So I, I got two, and I apologize. I, I will get into the flow of this, but I apologize. I went to the emergency services council. This is our countywide, all jurisdictions. It's mostly a good place to get to meet people and sort of get connected. The good thing is I did talk to the assistant fire chief for Cal Fire, for the state assistant fire chief for Cal Fire. So that was a good connection to make. So as we sort of do some of these things, I think it'll be a good contact. And then we had WPC, you know, wildfire preparedness committee. And they're doing good work. They're working to start reviewing the vegetation ordinances and, and start collecting public input. So I think that's going to be really valuable. And I've talked with Don and he's also looking forward to that. He doesn't have time to answer every individual person's question. So he's really looking forward to some of the committees sort of working with him to sort of field the questions and, and work through some of the issues. So I, I think it's, it's a good partnership.
I one, I have one meeting I didn't write up either. Principal Clean Energy Board met last week, approved a budget for the upcoming year and a five year budget. We are currently sitting on about three hundred and, three hundred million dollars in, in cash. We've, with this, this fiscal year, which closes this week, tomorrow, will, we will have amassed a hundred, we will have a hundred and twenty dollar profit per day. For various regulatory reasons, we're actually pulling in a ton of money right now and starting a conversation about how to start. I mean, we, this shouldn't have that much money. Two years, we'll have half a mil, half a billion dollars. About how to, how to responsibly sort of either spend it or get it back to the people. We've also saved San Mateo County, you know, seven million dollars in electricity costs. We also appointed a new CEO. Our original, Jan Pepper was our CEO we hired in two thousand fifteen. She was retired, I was ever retirement once today. And we hired Sean Marshall, who actually was one of the people that helped us in starting Principal Energy a few years ago. We've got a really good transition and I think Sean's in really good shape right now.
I'd also add that they have like an A minus credit rating, which is pretty awesome.
Just got our first A credit, A level credit rating from, that was from. It's a big accomplishment. Set out, the, the goal was to have an A, eight years ago. Because it's a new industry and people didn't understand how it worked. I mean, I was looking at this budget and, I mean, I, I remember in two thousand fifteen when we were begging the county in Berkeley to loan us twelve million dollars to get started and, and trying to explain there was a lot of money coming in. Now we're seeing, and our, our annual revenue this year is three hundred and fifty million.
And saving residents money.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and reducing carbon emissions. So. Amazing thing to watch. That's all I have. Is there public?
I have mine.
Oh, sorry. Yep.
Yeah, I went to the CTAG meeting. And I found it very interesting. I, I have bled down my eye. And I, I think I'll have, have a lot of fun with it. There's a resource management and climate protection. And the other was just to say that the planning commission has not met since the third. And there's a discontentment on not convening that, if at least it started on talking about comment and, and the things that they need to start thinking about. And people, of course, calendars, they come back from vacations and then didn't tell that it's being canceled. It means that they will end up inconvenienced and, and wanting to do it. So we're hoping that, that, that. And other than that, my only other question is why am I the only person who gets reports? And.
You're awesome.
Do you want, do you want to continue there? Very embarrassing.
I mean, I, I have been bad about putting my. I apologize for that.
No, I'm not asking for an apology. It's just that I actually find.
It was my idea. Yeah, yeah.
Because I, I can flex them back to the chairman. I think so they don't have things.
Yeah, it's, it's a good practice. I, I will be better prepared. It's good to have a good.
Had a little like, ASC was last night, so I'm not going to.
Yeah, no, that one.
I, and then you can remember. Your point area of it.
It's probably used. I mean, I thought it was.
We will attempt to continue. Okay, a public comment on the liaison reports. Rita, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the written reports, liaison reports, because I find it quite helpful, especially with the skeleton minutes that we get from some of the meetings, including this one. And then for some of the committee meetings, you know, if meetings are canceled, there are no minutes produced. It can take months. And then the next thing you know, a, an item is brought before the town council or in that particular group and the residents do not have any information in the way of minutes. And so the liaison reports are important and it's nice that they're in writing. So people don't have to watch the videos completely to get the update. So it is appreciated. And, you know, I wasn't happy when it was first asked of especially our new council members, but I have been looking forward to them in each packet. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other hands for, for public comment. So we will move on to the town manager report.
Can I, can I just make one comment to Rita's?
Sure.
I mean, we real, I really, everybody realizes it's a tough time for staff. And, and wants to recognize that. But a, a really important part of the committee's work is that we update the members on the list, that we update the, a list of, of which are. As soon as they're authorized, if they get put up there, then we don't lose track of who's on the committee. And people know who's on the committee, but also that I, and, and making sure that the list of open spaces is. For example, that, that there are thirteen committees that are listed as needing volunteers and volunteers then call and say, I'd like to volunteer for the finance committee. There's, they're then told that there's no space. So it's hard to recruit, it's hard to know how, how to recruit for the council and know how to recruit for committees when we're not keeping. On the, on those particular things. So as soon as authorized, because I'd forgotten. This is again about liaison, but I'd, I, I guess I never, I, I assumed you long ago had authorized Troy, but it apparently never got through the, the, somehow it never got in and I, not on the list. And I'm getting to reapply for G O T. Yeah, so that, I think if we've been updating it.
I should just throw a few things. I mean, one, maybe we could just ask the committee chairs to review their pages and make sure that they're accurate and up to date. And then the other, and Howard, we talked about this, is this strikes me as a potentially a volunteer project. This is not, this is not rocket science. It doesn't really take our staff. We need, I mean, they might have to come down to the town office and someone might need to log them in and say, you're allowed to type here. But, you know, adding somebody's name to here are the people who are currently on this committee is, is pretty easy work for a volunteer. So, so I think we could do both. I think we can ask the committee chairs for the updates. And then I think maybe we could actually look to get some volunteer help if you've heard that people.
If I may, through the mayor, that would be really helpful for us if they can go through the website just to make sure that they're most updated and then we can reach out internally.
Great. Okay, town manager report. Howard, go ahead.
Just really quick, we are finishing up our mowing of the right of ways. Fire, fire mitigation typically on Alpine and Hill and the main roads. We finished our trails like you indicated. We got really accolades for that, this, we avoided the wildflowers. Accolades from the ranch. Just wanted to point out the path here around the playground, in front of the playground. I got redone with brand new BG decomposed granite ground color. Just also wanted to welcome everyone, welcome our new town clerk, Jennifer Pearl, for everyone online. Yeah, too, yes, she was here. And also I didn't get a chance to thank Starland and me for their work on the budget. Things, items as we go forward for the mid year review discretionary item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Howard. Question?
I, I have a question. A trail, maintain Spring Ridge Trail. Spring Ridge, no, the one on the ranch.
Didn't you?
You know, that's. Okay, forget it. Never mind. Oh, Sweet Springs. Yes, there you go. When? I've gotten some complaints about it.
Then you can, you can, you can talk about that offline, but there are sections of trails in the ranch that are.
Yes, but I think Spring Ridge is falling behind on its.
A word I recall from the trails committee.
Thank you, Howard.
Just, just let me know. We have a crew out this week working on different, multiple different trails, grading trails this week.
You know, this is another one. I'd love to see you start creating a list for volunteers because if it's just dirt sloughing on a trail, a shovel and a little bit of back will clean it up. And we used to do a lot more of that. I, I mean, this is a larger discussion, but I do feel like we did more sort of boots on the ground volunteer work in the past. And we're getting more and more into white collar, you know, volunteer work where everybody has an opinion, but we're not actually getting stuff done. So I'd love to get us back to people actually doing some work and, and helping staff. Because that, that was our thing, that this is a volunteer town. And the reason we ran on a small staff is because volunteers did stuff, not just suggested stuff.
Thank, and thank you. One thing that comes to mind right now is that because we mowed the right of way, the star thistle comes out at a different time. Now that's popping up. That was helping the community pull star thistle right now.
Devlin froze.
No other questions for Howard? There's a public comment on Howard's report. Rita, go. Rita, go ahead.
Howard, thank you for taking care of all the the mowing that's been going on. And if we do need help, you know, there's there are many trail run clubs around in the Bay Area, including western states that happened in Auburn, California this past weekend. They run a hundred miles and every last one of those runners has to do trail hours in order to register for the race. And so we can we can tap into those. And, you know, while we're talking about needing money and so therefore we need volunteers, I want to remind everyone, if we did get that thirty four thousand dollars a month that the guy from the finance committee talked about at the last finance meeting, that's over four hundred thousand dollars in twelve months. That's money we need. Let's let's not forget that money while we're pinching here and there. So thank you for your report, Howard.
Thank you, Rita. And if you could come to the next trails committee meeting to assist in getting volunteers to do the work that we do.
Rita? Okay. If there are no other comments, then we're on item ten, which is adjournment. One favor. Hi. Thank you. Good night.